So, welcome everyone to the Monday, February 12th Committee of the Whole Meeting. We are going to bring the meeting back into session following a recess where we had an in- sorry, where we had a bylaw and policy committee meeting. Are there any items? We'll begin by adding any items to the agenda. I did have one item I wanted to add, membership on the Planning Advisory and Heritage Committee for discussion today. Any other items? Okay, so with that addition, could I have a motion to approve, please? I'll second. Sorry, those opposed. That motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the review of the minutes from January 15th, 2024. Are there any errors or omissions to note? Okay, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon has made the motion to approve the minutes from January 15th. Could I have a second, or?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on our agenda brings us to presentation time. So, we do have, I believe, Paul Beasley with us from Property Evaluation Services Corporation to chat about property evaluations, which I know has been a hot topic, and I believe you have a second person with you. So, I'll hand things over to you, Paul. Thank you for joining us virtually.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Okay, the next item is the review of the minutes from January 15th, 2024. Are there any errors or omissions to note? Thank you, Councilor Digdon has made the motion to approve the minutes from January 15th. Could I have a second, or?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on our agenda brings us to presentation time. So, we do have, I believe, Paul Beasley with us from Property Evaluation Services Corporation to chat about property evaluations, which I know has been a hot topic, and I believe you have a second person with you. So, I'll hand things over to you, Paul. Thank you for joining us virtually.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I'm not, I'm not, um, don't want to misspeak, but I'm not an expert on how it's calculated. We received that number from the provincial government, so, but you can go online and, and see from month over to month, month over month, um, how it's calculated and what that cap rate is set at. We get the final value. Um, it's, 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 it's all goods, consumer present index. So if you were looking on, on, on the, uh, on the Nova Scotia government website, and you, that there's a bunch of different numbers there, but it's all, it's all goods directly linked to the CPI. And you can, you can see that it's, it's released every, every month. Um, but we get the final number of what that's going to be said at, um, yeah, at, at the end of November, right before the, the roll comes out.
I think the other interesting part about CPI this year is Adam said it's year to year. It's the Stats Canada CPI for Nova Scotia. And, uh, it was tracking like it, uh, uh, last year was seven point seven, uh, and it was tracking in the fives and sixes for quite a while. And then it came down quite quickly the last few months to that three point two percent, reflecting that inflation had come down quite a bit, uh, just a, a couple of months prior to the actual, uh, roll going out. So, so yes, uh, the CPI rate or the, the amount that assessments would be, would go up as far as the cap, the maximum amount that are capped, uh, was, you know, less than half of what it was last year, seven point seven versus three point two.
Okay. Good Deputy Ward. Okay. Thank you, Paul and Adam. Any other questions for the team?
Yeah. Hey, guys, I just have, um, one quick one. The, um, is it PBSC uses a mass appraisal system to determine the value? Um, I guess, I guess one of the questions I would have from the residents is how, how does that determine if, because we've seen increases from anywhere from 10,000 to $100,000 within the, uh, single area. And we've also seen, you know, um, million dollar homes assessed for 500,000 and hundred thousand dollar homes assessed for 200,000. So I, I guess the question is, I, I know you say at the end of December, you kind of make the, I guess, the, the visual or you go around to, um, you know, the, the state date, you make the physical state of the properties then on December, but I'm just wondering how that's done. How, how do such a wide gap?
Yeah. So it's a great question. So two things there. Um, so it's a physical state of the property, right? As a, as a December first. Um, what we do, we have, so the 2020s, Paul mentioned, the 2024 assessments based on, uh, the base date for that is, uh, January 1st, 2023. So the, the, the state of the market at that time, which consists of sales, uh, market activity in the 2022 calendar year. Um, so a couple of different things. And, and it's a great question because it's, it's really one of the more, most common ones that we've seen. Um, we see every, uh, inquiry period, uh, how, how can different properties, um, in, in a similar area be assessed, uh, differently or go up different percentages? Uh, I think that was around the first part of your question. Um, so when we do our reassessment each year, we're looking at sales within each market area with, within each municipality. Um, so we review sales prices. That's, that's why we, we review all the set, the same, every sale that comes in, in the municipality, uh, just to make sure that our, our data is correct. Um, our, our data is correct, that we're not missing anything, because when we go to do our yearly reassessment, we do reassessments each year in, in every neighborhood. So when we're, when we're doing that, we're using, in the residential, uh, file, we use the, the most, um, reliable, um, approach to value. Paul mentioned the three approaches of values, direct sales comparison approach. So different properties may increase, um, uh, differently, at different percentages depending on each, um, I guess, a physical attribute that they have with, within that property. So they might be in, in a similar area, they could have, um, they could have different physical characteristics and thus they, they would increase differently depending on, on, on the type of property, uh, the main factors that drive back value of the year built, uh, factor in renovations, things like that. Um, and then also, so that, that's, that's one of the main things we, we see using the direct sales comparison approach when we do those yearly reassessments, um, depending on, 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 uh, the physical characteristics of each property, they may increase differently. And then also when we're reviewing that those sales or reviewing the, uh, building permits, it, it, well, especially with building permits, because it's usually renovations or new builds or things like that. They're obviously going to increase more than ones that don't take out building permits or don't, don't do, do the renovations because we're adding, those renovations are increasing the, the market value of their home most often. So, um, th- those are usually the main reasons why they would increase differently. But we, but I guess when we, we do the yearly reassessment in those, in those market areas, uh, based on, on the sales to, to set those market rates. And then we, and it's a great question. And like I said, it's probably one of the most common ones that we get. And, but we do, it, in, we always, whenever we're speaking to the public or, or, uh, en- engaging with, with property owners, we encourage them to, there's a couple of things that they can do. They can check their my property report on our website. They have a pin access code that they can go in just to make sure that what they're seeing and, and what they're being assessed for, they can confirm the details of, of their property on there. And then if they have any questions on value or they think, uh, cause that, when, when it comes under repeal, at the end of the day, it falls back to section 42, the Assessment Act. So it, it, it comes down to, is, is your property worth, if you were to sell that property on the market, open market, is it worth that, that, that value? And if, and if owners call in or, and read our website and they, they still think it's too high or they still, um, that they're not in agreement with, with our value, then by all means send the, send, send the appeal in. But we do encourage them to, to check, to, to check out, uh, to look at our website or call in and speak to an assessor and then they can make their decision after that.
I think, I think just to add to it, um, uh, one of the important things with mass appraisal is having sufficient sales in order to validate, um, market movements. And the past two years, as you can appreciate, uh, sales volumes have been up significantly and it gave us, you know, it really allowed us to look at the data and take a really good look at it and have enough data in, in many of the neighborhoods in order to actually reset that market value. Sometimes if you don't have enough sales, uh, in some neighborhoods, um, we really can't move it unless we're seeing that, that, um, evidence. So the fact that there's enough sales, uh, and I'll give you an example here as well. Um, the, the largest segment of homes in Richmond, residential properties are built between 1980 and 2000. And, uh, two years ago, or for the roll two years ago, or, or the previous year's roll, um, there were 66 homes in that cat, no, two years ago, there were 85 homes in that category and they sold on, and they sold in the market on average for 168,000. And then for this roll, there were 66 sales and they sold on average for 215,000. So that's about 25%. And that's exactly what the market's telling us is that, you know, these properties are selling for this amount on average. So you see that 25% in the market with good, strong sales. And that's why you're seeing some of the higher, higher, um, changes. And some neighborhoods, less changes, some neighborhoods, more changes, but on average, that's the type of numbers we're talking about. Hope that answered it for us.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Adam, for your response on that. I think we will have to call it there because we do have a full agenda. But, um, thank you for providing your contact information. Certainly if there's any follow-up from council or, um, or from members of the public, we can reach out to you using those channels. Uh, really appreciate your time, very thorough presentation this evening. And, um, yeah, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And as you say, if you have any questions, just funnel them through, uh, the CAO or, or the clerk. And, uh, they have our contact information. We'd be glad to answer any questions or inquiries you may have. So thank you very much once again, and have a good rest of your meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so there was just a single presentation on our agenda for this evening. So we'll move on to the next, uh, item of business, which is, uh, new business and it's the Richmond Water Utility Water Rate Study. Uh, so the information has been provided in your agenda packages in advance. Um, I want to thank, um, the team for putting that together along with the, the summary, um, of what you were, of, of where we're at with things. That's much appreciated. And so I'll open this maybe for discussion, uh, from council, but I'm not sure Troy, if, um, if, if you staff would like to, to discuss. We, we talked about this earlier today, uh, just in, in meeting the two of us. The rate studies are something, I think, that are required every eight years or sooner, uh, if the utility is determined not to be in a liquid situation. So, uh, yeah, I just used your pun there, didn't I? I totally borrowed your pun. Um, so, so it's not an, an unusual process and it is really to, to ensure that the long-term sustainability of the utilities is, uh, looked after. Um, but any comments or questions from council or comments from staff, however you would like to start that is fine. Okay. Um, so, so if there's no, uh, I guess, questions or, oh, sorry.
Yeah. One, one thing that stuck out to me during the presentation is that, uh, they had mentioned that, uh, the revenue or consumption, consumption was a whole lot less, not a lot less, but less from year to year or whatever. So, um, I guess that's a, you know, a good news story, Chris, right? So, uh, we're being more efficient, I guess, and then things are, you know, working the way they should. Uh, I guess my question would be, is there more that we could do to even improve that efficiency even more? Or is that something? I know, yeah.
Give him an inch and he'll take a mile, right?
Sorry.
Madam Chair, through you to council, uh, there, there's a, a number of water conservation websites out there on how people can do it. But what happens beyond the meter is a personal choice. And you, you could see a family of four use a mound X and the same, a different family of four use three times that for varying reasons. So, uh, but yeah, there's lots of websites out there and, and maybe as we go forward with this, uh, some social media stuff, uh, to throw that information out there to point homeowners if they have, uh, thoughts on, you know, how to get their consumption down. Like there's lots of municipalities in urban environments now where there's monitors right in the home where you can see when a tap gets turned on by the wall unit there. Uh, it's counting every drop of water coming out of there. And they see that when that information is present and right in front of the homeowners, they see consumption just plummet. Well, we're not there yet. Uh, but uh, there are technologies being developed and by all means, uh, keep your eyes out there. And those that are interested, I'm sure there's lots of sites where people can get ideas to help with their consumption.
Okay. Thanks, CAO. Um, I do want to also mention that I think since we approved our strategic plan at the last meeting, um, the full agenda package with the full rate study is in, is, is published. So for members of the public, if you're interested in seeing it, all bazillion pages of it are there. It's a lengthy one. But, um, I guess as a next step, uh, staff is looking to, uh, have council approve the rate study before submitting it to the UARB. Um, so, uh, I have a, a motion prepared, but I don't want to, I don't want to, um, jump, jump any steps if folks have additional comments. Okay. Um, so essentially we're looking for a motion that the municipality of the county of Richmond apply to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board for changes in its rates for water and water service, fire protection to the municipality of the county of Richmond, and changes to its rules and regulations for customers served by the municipality of the county of Richmond Water Utility as set out in the water rate study prepared by G A Eisner Consulting Limited in association with Blainus Rooney Consulting Limited.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Council Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the water study report? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay. That motion is carried. Um, so just want to say again, a huge thank you to staff for preparing that. I know it was a big piece of work and, and Chris, you were front and center on that. So really appreciate it. Um, okay. So the next item on the agenda, I have a couple of items under my name here. So I did provide a council report, um, just to give you a sense of some of the meetings and activities that have been ongoing since our last meeting. So this takes us to February 12th. Were there any questions on that? Okay. Um, on that report, I'll move to the next agenda item. It's a, a good segue. Um, is the municipality of the District of Geisborough UK Learning Tour. Um, so just want to give counselors, uh, a sense of what that tour entailed. And I did provide a six-page or seven-page, two-page or so, apologies for that. Brevity is not my strength. Um, but I just want to thank the municipality of the District of Geisborough, um, for organizing the tour. Um, as a co-chair for the Strait of Cancel Offshore Wind Task Force, I was invited to participate. It was a learning tour, um, with a whole variety of stakeholders that included representatives from, uh, the task force, as I mentioned, the provincial government, natural resources and renewables was in attendance, uh, the federal government through ACOA, the Geisborough County and Shore Fishers Association, the Strait of Cancel Superport Corporation and Melford Terminals. Um, it, you know, the learning tour was, uh, jammed into a couple of days, um, where we visited projects in, uh, both Aberdeen and Newcastle, um, from January 28th to the 31st. I do want to mention, um, some of the learning outcomes. Um, you know, obviously they're an industry in that region that is 30 years ahead, uh, of, of where we are today. It's, uh, clear that the UK government has certainly identified, um, energy transition and the green economy is a top priority based on the millions and millions of pounds that they are investing into that sector of the economy. Um, and, and as you can tell from the enabling policy development as well. Um, a couple of key pieces I wanted to note though, just from the tours was, um, that the, the strong professional services and industry associations that have been created to support the responsible sector development and to ensure an appropriate level of community engagement. And I know that, um, the Cape Breton Partnership, NetZero Atlantic and, uh, and certainly the task force itself has been working really hard on the community engagement side, but there's, there's more work to be done. And, um, glad to see that we're kind of going in that direction of, of, uh, creating those organizations. Um, I do want to, uh, also say that their focus, uh, was on active and inclusive collaboration and a real focus on Marines, uh, innovative marine spatial planning to ensure that fisheries, energy and other sectors can coexist in, in our waters. Um, their training facilities, I was able to, I was, I got there a day ahead of the, of the rest of the group. Um, and I was able to take the Sunday morning to tour a training facility in Aberdeen that was not on the original agenda, uh, as well as, uh, visit one in Newcastle that was on the agenda. And I have to say, the quality of those spaces was, was quite something to behold. Um, and, uh, and the busyness of those spaces and learned a lot about some of the innovative ways that they are, uh, working with groups such as, um, X-forces, uh, to, to recruit, retrain people, um, for green economy jobs. Um, lot of talk about their underwater infrastructure, um, you know, depending on which side of the coin you were on, either, either how that can drive part of the economy forward or how we can minimize the footprint of that, because we have other sectors that, you know, that share the ocean as well, obviously. Um, and, you know, certainly would point out that the UK's ambition, um, to have as much benefit land where developments are taking place, uh, is being directly supported by the private sector, by, and by the public sector as well. They're looking, they're doing some really innovative work and aggressive work, I would say, to develop local supply chains, uh, research and training institutions. Um, you know, we talked about maybe enabling role for government to do a bit, bit of a play fairway style analysis to shrink data collection time. So that's essentially where, uh, the Nova Scotia government could go out and do some preparatory work on data collection that would be available to any developer to re, you know, to reduce those kinds of burdens. Um, also of interest to me was the discussion on ports. So we did visit obviously the port of Aberdeen, port of Tyne, uh, as well. And, you know, ports, basically the observation was that ports that have waited for private sector development or private sector investment before investing in infrastructure and readiness, they've missed the opportunity to attract those large private sector investments and projects. Clients look for certainty and surety. And, um, you know, when you don't have the facilities to attract them, they'll, they'll often go elsewhere. Um, and of course, uh, you know, currently, or I guess we recently had a request for proposals out for an offshore wind center of excellence, um, looking at what that could look like for Nova Scotia. So visiting the ORE catapult model in, uh, in the UK was, uh, quite eye-opening and although certainly at a different scale to anything that our, our governments, our private sector, I think, would be able to support at this stage in Nova Scotia. But we have to start somewhere. And I think these types of learning tours are really valuable. I've included some pretty detailed notes on each of the visits. I think there were nine or 10, uh, meetings. Um, and happy to answer any questions on that, but I also recognize it's, uh, there's, there's a lot of detail there. Um, yeah. So thanks again to our hosts at, uh, the District of Geisborough for, uh, opening the door to that. I, you know, one of the engagement sessions that, uh, occurred in Disco's for the Cape Breton Partnership and NetZero Atlantic's, uh, sort of community consultation, uh, there was a, a one person in particular in the audience who said, you know, we have, we have a job to do here and it's learning as much as we can about, uh, this sector before we jump in with both feet and that. This type of thing, I have to say, even more valuable, you know, than going to a conference where you have many, many delegates and presenters, but you're, you're kind of getting that sort of to the many communication. This was very targeted, uh, and the, and the, the visits were very much, um, I guess, designed and planned with the potential of the sector here at play. So you had really much more in-depth conversations and it was, uh, it was really, really useful. So, any questions on that? Okay. I had, I have put some pictures on my Facebook. If anybody would like to see them, I was going to do a slideshow presentation, but then I thought, no, well, we can just provide a seven-page report instead. Why would we do that? Anyway, okay. Um, so the next, any, so if there's no questions, I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda, switching gears completely. Uh, and it really is, uh, on emergency management and of course the storm. I, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to have a meeting right after an historic snowstorm without putting it on the agenda and discussing it, uh, in an open council meeting. Um, you know, it's, it was an extremely challenging time for many people, especially I want to, you know, recognize that those who couldn't get out of their homes for many days and those who live on secondary roads that couldn't, you know, couldn't get cleared, um, you know, right away. And, and the shelter in place advisory itself, I think was really hard on people after like the second, third day. And that went on for the better part of a week. You know, we're a community that's very used to helping out and getting out. And there was a lot of, you know, questions about whether or not comfort centers should open, but certainly the road conditions, um, they, they were dangerous. And so we needed to, you know, we needed to stick to that shelter in place advisory. Um, our municipal emergency management committee debriefs on these types of events, uh, to ensure we're continuously learning about how we can improve, uh, our processes and keep people safe. We, we always need to be doing that. So I'm looking forward, I think we have something scheduled later for this month. It was actually scheduled for, I think, the Monday of the storm, but we thought, well, we're not going to, this is not the best timing. We're going to let emergency management, focus on emergency management. Um, but I do want to just say, you know, in those times of stress and just difficulty, it's, it always helps to look for the helpers and we had no shortage of those. I know, um, you know, Steve Marcellus, R E M C, uh, had, put the communication out about, you know, if there's anybody who can't get out or needs help, whatever, let us know. And, and that information had been collected, you know, sent up, uh, sent up the line. And very specifically want to say thank you to our local fire departments, um, who did countless wellness checks and helped to shovel, uh, you know, people out when they couldn't open their front doors, the, the provincial plow drivers who took, I think, every shift possible to clear the roads, um, and the paramedics in our CMP who diligently responded to emergency calls, um, as well as of course the neighbors and family and friends who lent a hand or a shovel or whatever they had available to them to help, uh, dig people out. So we're fortunate to have many people to help, um, in those times and, and just makes me very thankful. Um, but it was certainly a scary one. It was a once in a generation storm. My feeling is that we're having more and more of those once in a generation, um, climate events. I guess that does tie a little bit back to the, the energy transition piece that we discussed earlier, but, um, you know, was, it was difficult to keep up with. And, um, and so we, you know, we will do a debrief. Um, you know, we'll talk about communication and equipment and all of the things. But at the end of the day, you know, we do, we do appreciate people's patience because the, sometimes these things just take some time to clear up. And, and I know everyone was working as fast and as hard as they could. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or comments. I know Steve, you're here this evening. Just want to say thank you again for your work and, and to Troy and, and all the staff who participated. Okay. Nobody wants to talk about the storm. Everybody wants to forget the storm happened. I agree. And maybe there's hopefully none coming this week. So I don't know if we're going to luck out that way or not. But, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for a second, I, I do want to elaborate on, uh, saying to staff, uh, to our own public works as well that had our facilities and our buildings open. Uh, I know that's what you, you, you meant as well, but, uh, we, we were back open and operational, uh, quicker than any other municipality. So, you know, size does play a part. We, we are rather small and we have few facilities, but our teams were out there. Uh, they had the landfill open, the water kept flowing and, uh, the rink got opened as well. So, uh, kudos to the team and, uh, thanks to all of them for working safely and getting out there and getting it done.
Yeah. Well said. Thanks Troy. Absolutely. Okay. Uh, if there's no other questions or comments on that, then I do want to move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is the vulnerable persons registry update. Um, so just kind of refreshing folks' memory, um, we did, you know, we did in September, I think, uh, pass a resolution, uh, at council, uh, asking, uh, Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities to work with the province on a registry that would be integrated with the 911 system. Um, that resolution was sent in October off to Minister Lur as well as to NSFM. We did receive a response, uh, from Minister Lur in December. And I just want to, you know, just want to make sure I get the wording right, but his letter indicated there were no plans in place at that time for provincial vulnerable persons registry. Across North America, these registries are operationalized by first responders at the local level. So that came from the minister in early December and I know was tabled, uh, in a council meeting. However, we did also receive, uh, this week, a response from NSFM. Um, so they've, uh, they've issued a response noting that, you know, NSFM has officially adopted, I guess, uh, the vulnerable persons registry as an advocacy priority. And I think that's a really positive step, step, because, you know, each municipality could be doing its own thing and reinventing the wheel 49 times, I think there are of us. Um, so the, the participation of NSFM as an advocacy partner in this helps to kind of maybe, I won't say ensure, but facilitate something a little more standardized. Um, so, uh, at this stage of the game, you know, I guess what I'm looking to do is ask council if you would consider, uh, making a motion to officially, uh, refer the vulnerable persons registry, um, work to our municipal emergency management committee, um, for discussion, um, and for, to see if we could make some advancements on the file here locally based, you know, working with NSFM or other municipalities that who are, who have an interest to see if we could get something started here to demonstrate some leadership on this file and to improve some safety, safety of our residents, of our most vulnerable residents too. Um, so I'd open that for discussion or questions from council.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, Madam Warden, uh, you know, going back to the previous topic and talking about the storm of last week, I think, uh, I think it's very important that we do our part here to make sure that we, you know, we, we follow up and, and do what we can here when it comes to this, uh, this list of vulnerable people, right? And we, like you had mentioned earlier, we had a lot of people that were vulnerable in this storm and, and in a lot of bad situations, right? So for us to have some sort of registry, to me, I think is important and, and we should do what we can to, to move it forward for sure. Thank you.
Thanks Deputy Warden. And I know, um, Troy, from our conversations through this past storm, you had mentioned that there was a form that the province had sent out that was really a standardized template. Was that for reporting where people would need assistance? And that's the kind of thing we could look at. It doesn't need to be a complicated tool, but if we could all use something consistent, I think would be really helpful. I don't want to speak.
Absolutely. Uh, and it was set up, uh, with the field so that it could just plug into the system at the province, which makes sense. It's centralized repository. And then that way the information they get from Richmond is identical to what they get from Digby a- across the province. And, uh, that, that's really what we were looking for and hoping for with this. So I, I strongly suggest that we don't give up on it and we keep going so that it does get centralized and standardized right across our province.
Okay. Thanks Troy. So could I have a motion then if councillors are in agreement to refer this item for action to the municipal emergency management committee?
So moved.
Thank you, Council Sampson.
Can I second that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thanks Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, moving right along. All right, so next item on the agenda, I believe, is the, under the CAO, we have an administration operations report and just want to begin by noting that that has, that is expanding all the time to include all of the activities going on. It's a little bit daunting to, to know that we're, you know, we've got so many hands working on so many various important issues for our constituents and, and the people of Richmond County. So any questions for Troy on the admin ops report or Troy, if you would like to speak to anything in particular, I invite you to do so.
Well, the big one would be on the IT side of things, that Clayton said appoint our IT person to start working with you one-on-one, so make your appointments with him so that you have your phone, you have your devices, so we can get everybody switched over to the Microsoft 365. And, yeah, no, it's, should only take 10, 15 minutes to get everybody done and each person. And then we'll be rolling out training opportunities or maybe lunch and learn or something so we can get in and make sure that we're using it to the best of its ability and everybody's comfortable with it because with it, we'll change our council packages and a number of other things. So just getting everybody familiar with it, you know, technology is great, but it can be a challenge. So we just want to make it as comfortable as possible because everybody loves change and we'll make this as painless as possible and, and Clayton is, you know, hammering out the bugs that we're coming across one at a time. It's a long process. We deal with lots of partners, but he, he's working and I shout out to Kit who continues to work with us and help us transition. It's, it's been a good working relationship and progress is being made, so thank you and bear with us, just like the snowstorm, patience and we'll get there. It'll be worth it in the end.
Thanks Troy. Any questions for Troy on that item? Councillor Sampson? No, you're good? Okay. All right. Okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item and that is community acknowledgements. And we always start our community acknowledgements with acknowledging our volunteer of the month. And this past month, the volunteer of the month is Jean Keogh from the Rocky Bay Irish Club, whose work has profoundly impacted the local community. Through her extensive efforts in creating, directing and supporting the Shamrock Players, Jean has become a vital force in the club's success. Her fundraising initiatives demonstrate strong leadership and ensures the club's sustainability. And just so I'm getting this right, the Shamrock Players are the group that puts on the, the shows, right? Yeah, I know. And I, if anybody can help me hook me up with tickets to that, I would really like to get some. I've missed out.
Better chance to go to the Super Bowl.
Oh, yeah, better chance to go to the Super Bowl. Every time I look, they're, they're sold out. Anyway, I'm too late to the party, so I'm counting on the team here to help me with that. In, in her more recent endeavors, Jean has taken the lead in organizing two memorable John Prine tribute shows, engaging, creating engaging trivia nights and multiple Mrs. Brown's Boys Dinner Theaters. Just needed to keep reading. And that has attracted to attendees from beyond Halifax and bringing laughter and joy to all. Throughout these events, Jean not only showcased her dedication, but also provided unwavering support to a dedicated team of volunteers, always with kindness and a warm smile. So please join us in recognizing Jean for her hard work, dedication and commitment to her community. By all accounts, it sounds like she is moving and shaking with the Rocky Bay Irish Club, so much appreciated, Jean. Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that or comments or if you'd like to make additional community acknowledgements? Now is the time. Councillor Jean?
Yeah, no, I won't make any additional ones, but I would, again, it's a great pick for the volunteer of the month and again, just by reading, reading the report, she is definitely, she's one of those people that's always around the Rocky Bay Hall and every function. I don't think there's a function that goes on that Jean either doesn't have a hand in setting it up or, yeah, or the task at hand. So, yeah, great job and a great pick for the month.
Okay, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so I'm just gonna go back, Madam Warden, to a topic earlier on when it came to last week's storm. You know, for me, my approach has always been not to point out anyone when it comes to major events or, you know, major organizing, you know, events and, and when it comes to benefits and, and events in our community, you try not to pinpoint out anyone and this is no different. You know, I just want to thank anybody that was behind the wheel of a snow removal clearing equipment, you know, I mean, some of those guys practically slept in those, in those equipments, right, in, in those rigs, right? So just want to thank them all. I also want to thank everybody that had to work through that storm, you know, to serve and protect and provide for the residents of Richmond County. So, you know, I just want to thank everybody for a job well done last, last week, so thank you.
Thank you Deputy Warden. There we go. Thanks Deputy Warden. Well said. Lots of sleepless nights, I'm sure, by many people to get that all together. Okay. All right, so if there's no further community acknowledgements, I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence. And we do have one piece of correspondence that, that does have action required from Sergeant Brad Kelly of the RCMP regarding road safety in Richmond County. Essentially Brad has provided us with a note requesting access to the data from the speed radar signs that are set up in, or have been set up in various locations in the county. You know, he's basically looking to gain access to the data so they can properly position the members and choose the best time of day to conduct traffic enforcement in the county. You know, this kind of enforcement, it's, you know, has the chance of, reduces the chance of harm to people and property and also has the potential to save lives. And certainly, he's very interested in, in gaining access to the data so they can plan accordingly. So would councillors be okay with providing that data? I think...
That's why we did them in the first place.
It's why we did it in the first place, yeah. Well, it certainly is a big part of the reason, right, was to, to ask people to slow down. And, you know, this initiative did come from council to get the speed radar signs in place originally, so appreciate staff bringing back this back to us with the request from, from Sergeant Kelly for sure. So any, any comments on that? Do we need a motion probably?
Oh, please.
Yes, okay. So could we get a motion to provide, to approve the request for access to data from speed radar signs in Richmond County and further move that staff provide Sergeant Kelly with the requested information?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Diggden. Could I have a second or?
I'll second.
Councillor Melanie Sampson has seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
So what data are we providing exactly? Is it just the speed and the times when it hit? Or what?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm looking at one of the reports right now and I won't say where and I won't say what time of day, but I will say the 339 cars went by and 91% of them were speeding. So it does total vehicles, total violations, percent violations, what the min speed, max speed, and kilometers and counts. So, yeah, it's, and...
It's not license plates.
It, it is not license plates. It, it's...
Everybody relax.
It's not, it's not pictures of any kind, but, but it does break it down in the whole 24-hour cycle, which is important for our traffic enforcement because they're seeing when the violations are happening, though some places, it's happening throughout the whole cycle. So, you know, lots of work to be done there, but yeah, it gave them really, really useful information, so.
No, thank you for that. No, and I think it's good to be, I know it doesn't take photos, but it's good that it's clear for the public at home that it doesn't, doesn't do photo radar and we're providing it for them, so.
And Madam Chair, if I may, for, on our side, operationally through Public Works, we only look at the counts and the time of day counts for yearly counts if we need empirical data for capital improvements or go into the province with requests. So that's the only reason we have them.
Okay, thanks Troy. So, any further discussion? Okay, no, we're good? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is unfinished business and I believe our, which is the Coastal Riders Trail Access and I believe our CAO has an update for us on that. Over to you Troy.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Met with the Coastal Riders on site a couple weeks ago now, observed what they were proposing, want to thank them for having the foresight to want to do something out there to protect the investment we already made in the capping of that previous landfill site. A trail does go along there as it stands right now, so right now we are waiting on legal, just to make sure we understand what liabilities are there. What they're proposing seems like a great idea, but again, we have to make sure that legally I can come back to you guys with the report so we know what allowing them to build a snow fence along there opens us up to. And once we have that report, then we'll come back, but they, you know, kudos to them for reaching out to us to want to work with us and try and protect and realize the costs that the municipality incurred trying to reclaim that land out there and they're just trying to keep honest people honest, which, you know, is awesome. So we appreciate that and as soon as we get an answer, it'll be coming back to council.
Thank you Troy. Any questions on that? Okay, next item on the agenda is the review of checks issued. This is for information only, so does anybody have any questions on the review of checks or comments? Okay, the next item is the review of the action items, again, for information only. Any questions or comments on the action items list? I do have one comment. Shelley, we can mark item 313 about the vulnerable persons registry, we can mark that complete because I took care of that today, once we, once we regrouped on that item. I love marking things complete on that list. It makes me feel good. It's beautiful. All right, if there's no questions, then on the action items, we'll move on to the next, which is items added to the agenda. And I did add the PAC, the Planning Advisory and Heritage Committee membership. And, you know, over the past number of years, I know there are three councillors appointed to the PAC right now as, along with two members of the public. My, you know, my, my feeling over the last number of years is that it creates an information gap, I feel, for, for me as a councillor at the table. So I know I've attended some in the past, that the reality is if, you know, if they don't get jammed in my schedule, then I, then I, I do miss them. So my, my question, I guess, or suggestion is that we, you know, and I don't know councillor Diggden, I think you're the other, you're the other councillor who is not on that membership right now. You know, would council be agreeable to appointing the, both councillor Diggden and myself to the PAC for the remainder of this period? Because I think it's something that we were looking at putting into our committee structure review anyway, was to ensure that all of council has membership at that committee. It would allow us to take part in the discussions, as, you know, as well as, not just listen in, but also would allow us to take part in any in-camera discussions as well, so. So I'm just putting it on the table that we don't need to wait for, you know, to have all of our committee structure pieces in place. We can just add the additional councillors to the committee if, you know, if that's the will of council. So that's my suggestion at this point. I'm open for discussion on that. I, recognizing perhaps, you know, councillor Diggden, I'm volunteering or suggesting a, a piece of work there, you know, but without having spoken to you, but certainly, you know, certainly I would be interested in, in sitting at the table, so. Sorry. It is one of our most powerful tools as a council, right? That and the Policy and Bylaw Committee, so I think having all of us there as we do for Policy and Bylaw tends to make a bit of sense. Anyway, I'll leave that open for discussion from council. Yep?
I hit the button before. You gave me the go-ahead to speak. I would tend to agree with you. I just feel like it's, it's a very key, it really is something we should have changed a long time ago, you know, as we went into the Plan Richmond and a whole bunch of other pretty significant pieces of work, I think, at PAC over the past number of years. And I think that it does present a bit of a gap as we move things forward to council and I do think, to your point, you know, when I think about committees that should have all members of council, I think, you know, bylaw, policy, audit, those make sense. I think PAC makes sense as well. So I would certainly be in support of that. I'm just not sure if we, I have, just where it was at tonight, I haven't had a chance and maybe you have, like to make sure, is there any, like, policies or whatever that we need to adjust to allow that to be?
So it would be just the committee structure that we approved three-plus years ago. I think that is the only place where...
Maybe terms of reference.
And the term, yeah, the associated terms of reference, yeah. 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 I know, comments, any?
My only thought would make more sense to, to do that maybe going forward for the next term, like in the sense that it's, they're open meetings now, so we either could attend if you want and are pretty open to allowing you in on the discussion. You know what I mean? If, if need be.
Yeah, no, and, you know, I think it's a good point and I have attended and I know councillor Diggden, you've attended some as well. The, the point is, is that we don't have a voice officially at that table and we can't vote on, on matters either. So I'm, I'm just kind of one of those why wait kind of people, I guess. Anyway.
Yeah, just that they all come back to council anyway. And we've, I think we've only ever had one in camera, which was, yeah, which you're good on now.
Councillor Diggden?
Yeah, I tend to agree with you, Madam Warden. And it was that one in camera, I think, that, that kind of, you know, turned this ball rolling a little faster. Again, the problem with the in-camera meeting is that you and myself are not privy to that information, I guess, until it comes. And sometimes it's the cart before the horse, unfortunately, and, you know, last week, last week, that's what happened. But again, yeah, I'm, like, like you, I think that it's, and like councillor Sampson, I think it's definitely a need to have us on, on those very important committees, so I would, yeah. I think sooner than later.
And I mean, I think, I think to councillor Sampson's point, like in the past, both of
you have come to the committee meetings and spoken freely, but really, I honestly, that never made me feel comfortable. That made me actually feel uncomfortable because that it's not an open meeting for all people to discuss and I, to be honest, felt like there were liberties, liberties granted because of your position on council. So I personally would be more comfortable if it was in that, like if it was in an official capacity and then future councils can make whatever decisions they want in term of their committee, committee structures if they feel it's better to be streamlined or not.
Yeah, no, I certainly have felt uncomfortable speak, speaking up even though I'm squirming in my chair sometimes and I'm like, and I know and I appreciate, you know, councillor Brett Sampson as the chair, you've been very accommodating that way, but it, it does make me feel a little bit uncomfortable because I know it's not an official capacity, right? So, okay.
Just want to make one more comment. I also think that, you know, just because all members of council sit on that committee, I don't know, I don't feel that there is a need for the warden to be the chair of that committee. And again, that's something I've kind of said before, I don't necessarily feel that warden needs to be the chair of any of those committees of council. I think that's the way it's been, but, you know, and I know we are going to look at our committee structure, so that can be part of that conversation, but.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. Not looking to make any... If we could just settle down on that, that would be great. Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. Not looking to make any kind of wholesale changes, just looking to be an official part of the discussion. Okay, so if that's the case, perhaps, perhaps I could ask for a motion to add Warden Member Cad and councillor Diggden to the Planning Advisory Committee effective immediately and to update the terms of reference accordingly. Someone care to make that motion? Thanks Deputy Warden.
I just keep pushing the button and cutting people off. It's a terrible night for me. I'm gonna second that now that I've pushed the button again.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. So the motion has been made. Could I, any further discussion on that, sorry? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay? Okay. That motion is carried. Okay. So at this point, there are no other items added to the agenda. So we'll open it for a 15-minute question period, a maximum of 15 minutes. The number to call for folks who are watching at home, and I think we are livestreamed this evening, is 902-226-9885. It's 902-226-9885. And I would also just like to say it's 10 after 8. It's, yes, this was, I thought we were going to be here a lot longer, looking at the agenda, but we've motored through and it's, yeah, been a great meeting. So. All right. We're just going to give that a few minutes, because I think there's a little delay. Okay. So we'll call it and close question period. And there being no further business, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks to staff again for your work. Much appreciated. Have a great evening, everyone.